Good evening. My name is Mayor Dean Brooke and it's October 6, 2020. This is a regular meeting of Durango City Council. Thanks for those of you that have been waiting out there. We had a couple executive sessions that we just concluded. And so we appreciate your tolerance and letting us take a quick break before we started this meeting. So I'd like to call this meeting to order with a roll call, please.
Councillor Bateen?
I'm here.
Councillor Noseworthy?
Present.
Councillor Youssef?
Here.
Mayor Protem Baxter?
Present.
And Mayor Brooke?
Present, thank you. I can stop my computer from glitching here. Thank you for that. The next item is just an identification of any actual or perceived conflicts of interest from any city councillors or staff that may be related to any item on the agenda this evening. Seeing none, we will move into item four, which is public participation. This section of the agenda is set aside for public to provide comments and ask questions regarding items that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. City council will not respond to questions from the dais. However, citizens, however, we will make it a public record. Citizens should address their comments directly to city council. This is a virtual meeting. The avenues for public participation have been adjusted. The public may view the meeting live on Durango Government Television, DGOV, on Spectrum Cable, Channel 191 or 981, over the air with antenna on Channel 10.1, or streaming online at durangogov.org, or facebook.com/cityofdurango. An email link of public comment is located at the durangogov.org/meetings at the top of the page, as well as on the agenda itself, under public participation. Comments must be submitted no later than noon on Monday preceding the meeting. Each email should contain the corresponding agenda item in the subject line of the email. The sender's full name and address should be included for the record. If comment by email is not possible, comments may be placed on top of the Dropbox located in front of City Hall, no later than noon on the Monday preceding the meeting. Comments directed at legislative public hearing subject will be read into the record as part of the hearing process. All other comments will be made available to council or board within a reasonable time. Email comments should be directed to publiccomment@durangogov.org. Members of the public who wish to provide verbal comments can use the virtual meeting information at the top of this agenda to join the meeting. Please ensure that you have the Zoom app installed on your computer or mobile device prior to the meeting. The mayor will provide additional details during the meeting when the public comment is accepted. So with that, we will now hear public comments on any items. To keep the meeting moving along, we are limiting comments to three minutes. Keep an eye on our moderator. The video feed will show your time remaining. Please use the raise hand function if you are using the Zoom app to indicate that you would like to provide a comment. If you called into the meeting using your telephone, press star nine to raise your hand. Our moderator will announce the next person to speak and will ask you to unmute yourself at that time. I would like to ask to remind everybody to be civil in this public forum. We encourage everyone to express their views and opinions, but ask that you do so in a respectful manner, free of explicit or derogatory language. To begin, please state your first and last name and your home address for the record. With that, Mitchell, can you invite our first participant?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Mitchell Carter. I am your acting communications manager. With your permission, I would like to give a quick presentation about a couple updates on our website, if you don't mind. Can I have two minutes of your time?
Absolutely. This is Article 5.1, which is additional translation tools.
If, sorry, yes, if there's a more appropriate time than now, I can do that later.
I think it'd be appropriate now.
Hand raised for public comment, and I think we were going to do public comment before the presentation.
Yep, I'm sorry for the confusion.
Unless, Mitchell, it helps with the public comment.
It can wait, it can wait.
Okay, well, in that case, we'll take public comment first, and then you can say your comments after.
I do see Greg has raised his hand. Greg, I have invited you to speak. Please unmute yourself and give us your full name and address for the record. And you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Brooke and city council. My name is Greg Phillips. I live at 217 Hillcrest Drive in Durango. And tonight, I am speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters. I'm a volunteer. And I just wanted to give the council and the public an update on some programs and services provided by the League in advance of the upcoming national, state, and local election on the November 3rd. First off, next Wednesday, October 14th, the League is sponsoring a virtual Zoom webinar featuring presentations by Fort Lewis students from political science and US national government classes. The students will be providing brief, nonpartisan overviews and analysis of each of the 11 Colorado statewide ballot amendments and propositions. It should be very informative and helpful. They've worked hard to provide unbiased perspectives. The forum will also include a presentation on local ballot issue 4A by Erica Brown, who is a member of the Durango 9R School Board. The Zoom webinars will begin at 5:30 PM and end at 7:00. And there are links to view it that can be found on the League of Women Voters of La Plata County website, and that's L W V LaPlata.org. That's L W V as in Victor La Plata.org. The event's also going to be livestreamed on Facebook at the La Plata League of Women Voters LaPlata.org site. That's facebook.com/LWVLaPlata.org. And it's going to be broadcast on Durango Gov TV and Four Corners Broadcasting, 9:30 AM and 97.3 FM. And finally, in addition to the forum, the League is also offering kind of unique services here to anyone who has questions about voter registration, the election, the ballot. League members are also available to pick up and deliver your ballots. So all you have to do is visit L W V LaPlata.org and for the contact info on who to call or email. I'd just like to remind everyone that's listening that voting is both a right and a privilege, and make sure your voice is heard, no matter what you believe or whom you support. Please vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips, for that timely and important information. Thank you. Mitchell, can you invite our next participant?
We do have a couple other attendees, but no one else has raised their hand. If you are here to speak during public participation, now is the time.
All right, well, if no other participation, then we will move on to Article 5.1, which is an update from the Public Information Office regarding additional translation tools to the website and open records request policy draft for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, hello again. Mitchell Carter, Acting Communications Manager. Let's try this again. I did want to just give a brief presentation on two updates on the website, both of which we are very excited about. I'm going to share my screen real quick. You should see the landing page of our website. Earlier today, we issued a news release about new translation tool for the website. This new tool is being provided by Google. In the bottom right-hand page of every page of the website, we now have this select language button. We can scroll through here, and there's over 100 different languages. Once someone makes their selection, it will automatically translate the content of the website into their select language. I did want to read an update to our disclaimer that we've just recently added because of this functionality. "The service provides automated computer translations that are only an approximation of the website's original content. The translation should not be considered exact and only used as a rough guide. The City of Durango does not warrant the accuracy, reliability, or timeliness of any information translated by this system. It will not accept liability for loss incurred as a result. Some website features, files, or items cannot be translated, including graphics, photos, or PDFs." So while we do now have this ability for non-English speakers to read the majority of the content on our website, we do have some hurdles to still overcome, but this was one giant leap forward for inclusivity in our community. So I wanted to share that with council tonight. The other thing that I wanted to share comes from the Clerk's office. It has been six years since we have updated the open records policy based on the Colorado Open Records Act. And there has been quite a bit of legislation change in those last six years. So we do have a draft policy on the website now for people to read and provide comments and feedbacks about. So I encourage everyone who is interested in viewing the new policy to visit durangogov.org/records，请 request feedback. And with that, those are the two major updates that I wanted to share with council. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Mitchell. Any questions for Mitchell at this time?
Those are both great, great improvements.
Thank you, Mitchell, great.
I agree. It's been, it's been, it's a major leap forward for inclusivity for all the various languages that we now can be translated into. So it's a bit of a scary thought, but it's quite nice. We can practice our language skills as well. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the review of the consent agenda. "The consent agenda is intended to allow city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item 6." With that, may we have a reading of the consent agenda? Then we'll ask council if there's any items they wish to be removed.
Items 6.1 through 6.3 are approval of minutes. 6.1 is approval of minutes from the city council meeting of September 1st, 2020. 6.2 is approval of minutes from the city council meeting on September 15th, 2020. 6.3 is approval of minutes of the city council study session on September 22nd, 2020. Item 6.4 is a request for a public hearing to consider amendments to Sections 2-2-3-4 and 2-1-3-3 of the Land Use and Development Code, Vacation Rental Homes. The request for the public hearing is to be held on October 20th, 2020.
Thank you, Fay. Is there any councillor who wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda this evening? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call, please?
Councillor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Councillor Bateen?
Yes.
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baxter?
Yes.
And Mayor Brooke?
Yes, thank you so much. With that, we can move on to Section 9, which is public hearings. And we have no legislative policy-related hearings and no quasi judicial hearings in that Item 9.2.1 was continued till October 20th. And that is, it was a public hearing on the Cummins Initial Zoning and Conceptual Plan. So we will look forward to that on our October 20th agenda. And with that, Item 10, which is the city attorney, there we have no items unless Dirk has anticipated something since the agenda was written. If none, we'll move on to Item 11, which is introduction of ordinances, beginning with 11.1, "An ordinance vacating and abandoning a portion of the public right-of-way on East Second Avenue and declaring an effective date." Dirk, would you like to explain that for us?
Yeah, this is ordinance O2020-13. This is the item that came before council two weeks ago as part of a public hearing. The next ordinance is related to that. One would be the abandonment of a portion of right-of-way along East Second Ave and rezoning that parcel, along with the piece to be acquired by the railroad to create a larger parcel owned by the folks at that address. So again, this first ordinance is ordinance O2020-13.
Thank you, Dirk. Any discussion from council? Or I would entertain a motion regarding this ordinance? Hearing no discussion, can I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve 2020-13.
I'll second that one.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call, please?
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
Councillor Bateen?
Yes.
Councillor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baxter?
Yes.
And Mayor Broke?
Yes, thank you so much. We'll move on to 11.2, which is "An ordinance for the purposes of amending the zoning of real property located within the City of Durango, Colorado, pursuant to Chapter 27, Sections 6-3-2-3 and 2-1-2-6 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango and declaring an effective date." This is commonly known as the Larkin rezone. And Dirk, do you have anything to say about this one?
This is a companion ordinance, and again, this is 2020-14 to the previous one, which would rezone both the piece, the property that's abandoned by the city and the piece that the Larkins are acquiring from the railroad to match the zoning of the residential property.
Thank you, Dirk. Is there any other discussion amongst council? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance 2020-14.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Baxter?
Yes.
Councillor Bateen?
Yes.
Councillor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Broke?
Yes, thank you so much. With that, we move on to administrative items. Item 12.1, which is a, 12.1 is intended to provide direction to the city manager on the memorandum of understanding submitted by La Plata County on temporary use of the Purple Cliffs, which is our homeless site on county property south of town. Jose, would you like to talk about this for a moment?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and council. Jose Madrigal, city manager. This is following our joint Board of County Commissioners and City Council meeting where the county proposed or provided to us a memorandum of understanding with a purpose of having a joint partnership in maintaining the temporary use of Purple Cliffs as a camp. What we talked out of there was allowing to discuss, to have a chance to look at the memorandum of understanding, have a chance to review it since it was presented to us probably about an hour, two hours before the meeting. And what I'm looking for here from the city council is to provide me direction to allow me to go into negotiations with the county manager to formulate a memorandum of understanding that can be reviewed by the council and the Board of Commissioners at the 13th joint meeting that we have upcoming next Tuesday.
Thank you, Jose. Any discussion, or I would entertain a motion for that said direction that the city manager is requesting? First, any discussion?
Sure, so.
Go ahead, Kim, and then Chris.
Go ahead, Chris, that's fine.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I think because we did receive some feedback on the timing of that initial stab at the MOU, and thanks, Jose, for sort of summarizing that. But I just wanted to say, you know, I think for a lot of the councillors here, before we attended that meeting with the county commissioners, we, many of us may have had, you know, 10 minutes, five minutes, zero minutes to review that document. And so there wasn't an ability before that meeting to really contemplate the contents or the import of that document. And I just wanted to say that for the record. And now we have a chance to have our staff and our councillors weigh in.
Thank you, Chris. Kim?
Yeah, I agree. I think the timing restraint was significant. And I really also thought that as partners, one of the ways we might have started this conversation was to have had the city manager and the county manager sit down and develop a list of items that might need someone to take management responsibility for, and then to discuss them and bring them back to their respective electives to make those, to make those choices. And I personally felt that, and it's actually been mentioned in numerous forums, that this kind of feels like the two outgoing county commissioners are trying to force the city to make decisions before they leave office. And I'm not certain that benefits our community. I completely support working together with the county to come up with a collaborative solution. And I think that to have Jose and Chuck go forward with this and staff go forward is a good way to do that. So I do support that, but I would like to say that I'm hoping that the collaboration is evident in the county rather than them trying to dictate what both entities should be responsible for.
Thank you, Councillor Baxter. I think, I echo your sentiments and your thoughts. And it did appear, I think we all left feeling a little, like, the term was lickety-split. You need to make this decision lickety-split, as quoted by the, by one of the county commissioners. And, you know, this is not a, this has not been a lickety-split decision. We continually aided in the continuation of the camp. We've provided various temporary sites in the past, including the previous site at Elkview. And we have a different process in the city than the county enjoys. And we, because we are, this site is proposed, or was proposed in, within the city limits, the county's asking us to take over their site, essentially. And I did, I too had hoped that it would be more participatory and that the county would remain engaged and continue to assist in the, in the that community for unhoused people south of town. So I agree. Chris, your comments?
Yeah, I want to agree with both of you. And also, just kind of to remind the public of the timeline that both the city and county have been conducting themselves under. It was about a year and a half ago that we all entered into a process by which we started down the path of a strategic plan that we jointly funded and finally got approved. And then we saw that strategic plan maybe six months ago. I might be a little off on that timing, but somewhere in that neighborhood. And then that was the formation of the NINA group that came out of that plan as a remnant of the plan a little bit. And then that group spent most of the summer preparing what they thought would be a proposal for a camp within the city. And we, all of us, including the county and individually, or the council and the county individually, received a proposal from NINA probably four weeks ago, approximately, for the first time hearing that proposal. And so we've all had about four weeks to absorb the concept of what Nina wanted to go through and do. So, you know, the frustrations that have been enumerated in the newspaper and through other mechanisms, I just, I wanted to put them in context of that timeline because we were heretofore, we were partners in this endeavor. We were moving forward together. We're funding these items together. We were providing transportation out to the Purple Cliffs. We were providing other services out at Purple Cliffs in conjunction with the county's efforts. And, and so the tone, at least that has been relayed in the public's forums, has changed. And certainly, I think from the city standpoint, I'm hearing the councillors say we'd like to continue to collaborate and move forward actively and try to come to a resolution. But I also want to remind the staff, as they do negotiate this document that I don't recall, and maybe someone can correct me, the city ever committing that this camp would be on a city parcel. I think that was the idea that Nina came up with in the first stab at the thing. But certainly, if there was a county parcel available that met the requirements of the plan, that might also be looked at. And so I don't want to go down the path of an assumptive process where we're assuming that the city is going to take that on, and we are going to manage that. It's certainly not within the purview. I think Mayor Protem Baxter mentioned it in our last meeting, that, you know, the city doesn't have a human services department. It's not one of the purviews of our city. And taking this on is a new endeavor for us. So we'd love to move forward collaboratively. At least that's my, my sense of the thing. And just wanted to state all of that for the record.
Thank you for that summary, Chris. Melissa, did you have any thoughts, or you wanted to share? Barbara?
Yeah, yes, please. I, I look forward to having you start negotiations, Jose, with the county on this. And, and just, you know, further recognition and understanding that this is a memorandum of understanding, that we're entering into an agreement together. It outlines our understanding, mutual understanding of how we address this together. And I would suggest, my suggestion would be, Mr. Madrigal, for you to approach this under the, with the desire to have a full understanding of all the costs associated with this project and with moving forward for a homeless camp that we have all supported in the homeless plan. So I would, I would really suggest that we get a very clear understanding of what those costs will be in relation to law enforcement, camp host, fire mitigation, cleanups, everything that was identified in the previous outline, transportation, privacy fencing, winter sheltering, planning, and, you know, property, any property work that needs to be done. If we could get a very clear understanding of what the costs are related to this going forward for this winter, I would like to, my best-case scenario would be that we would jointly share in those costs at this camp for this immediate term. That would be the best-case scenario in my situation. And from what I understand, that's what a memorandum of understanding is, is that each party come to a mutual understanding of how we're going to work together. And the way I always understood it is that we're going to work together collaboratively and share in these expenses. So that would be my starting point if I were working with the county. In addition, I would lay out the fact that if there is not enough space at the current Purple Cliff site, since we have designated that this is the best place for the current time being, then I would suggest that we consider the possibility of adding our Purple Cliff site south of the current designation to add more camping space and/or allow more space between the campers, if so desired. If, that would be something I would consider as a city. And I, I know that there may be some implications that we need to look into, but it would be something that I would consider, or consider looking into further. And then the last thing is that I do think that in this memorandum of understanding, we need to be careful about dates. I think that this has been mentioned in the past, that putting an ending date to this, you know, I think we need to be careful about making it May 1st, if that's the date, because we need to make sure that we have an alternative and a plan in place before that time, before we terminate. So those are just my suggestions as you go into these negotiations.
Thank you, Melissa. Barbara, did you have some?
Yes. Thank you. And I echo much of the sentiment already expressed. I would like to just say to the city manager, you have my full support in working with the county manager. Also, that this is a draft, and it was, you know, it was a starting point. And the county commissioners also indicated that it was kind of their wish list, recognizing that it's a back-and-forth discussion and ultimately what we all hope to be a collaborative partnership. So I'm looking forward to hearing from what you and Chuck come back with and those issues. And to Councillor Youssef's point as well, I recognize that this space at the county site is limited, and there are more people than there were months ago. So if it means that also opening up the adjacent property, which the county had actually requested of us, I recognize that we need to look into that. And that may be part of the issue of being a full partner, is also providing the space. And I also am looking forward to the estimated budget for all of this. I know we have some opportunities for funding through the joint sales tax. And also, we have a commitment eventually to funding part of the Athena Plan, which also talks about other issues beyond this camp. So I, you have my full support in working with the county manager, and I'm eager to see the next iteration of this MOU. and I'm eager to see the next iteration of this MOU.
Thank you, Barbara. Great comments. And I don't know that we need to actually take formal action on on this provision of direction to the city manager or just give you a go ahead. And Kim, I'll get up.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry. You have an opportunity, but for housekeeping, I just want to ask Jose if we were intended to take a vote on this issue or whether just giving you a direction was sufficient.
Direction is sufficient unless Dirk thinks there needs to be a motion, but I think I have all five in favor giving me direction in a public. Feel good.
Okay, great, great. Thank you so much, Jose. And my connection just got lost there for one second. And Kim, can you add your add your thoughts as well? Thank you.
So one of the things, you know, I I had sent an email out to council and some staff members today about this. And one of the things that really concerns me is the arbitrary deadline, as both Councilor Youssef and Councilor Nozworthy mentioned. Because I I and I think all of us have mentioned that that doesn't create for good decision-making and planning. So just one idea that I threw out there was the idea that the city might purchase that property from the county, and then we would not be subjected to their arbitrary deadlines. And we could also do a better job of determining what resources we wanted to use and how to use them and when. Now, I recognize that that may not be the best answer, but it's one that we haven't discussed. And if indeed we wanted to expand into the city, current city Purple Camps, Purple Cliff's property, I I too agree that that's a very feasible idea. One of the big challenges is parking of vehicles, and maybe there's a way to get access onto that piece of property for the parking, for example. But I, you know, I do wonder about the idea of purchasing the land because we already have the other Purple Cliffs as open space. And maybe this section could also become more open space once my camp was closed or moved somewhere else in the in the distant future.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim. Yeah, that is a meritorious idea. I think, you know, my my concern about that would be that, you know, that the county would have fully washed their hands. It would become our full responsibility. And I'm not opposed to that concept. I I like the idea of having an adjacent mutual property, which is ours, that jointly manage so that it continues to move into the future as a mutually managed camp and mutually funded camp. But if it's easier that way for, you know, police protection, law enforcement is one of the bigger sticky issues. And that would certainly solve that problem similarly in the same way we did when we actually acquired Lake Knight Horse. And so it might not be a purchase. It might be an acquisition as well. I don't see that it serves long-term purposes for the city necessarily, but great, great thoughts. So with that, Jose, are you are you comfortable? I think you have our direction. It's not a an action in which we need to vote at this point. We'll just look forward to that modified contract or modified agreement. And the the comment was that we'd like to see it back. And I assume the county commissioners would like to see that version as well. And mutually, we'll we'll come to an agreement at some point in the future. So.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I might end in saying that we did receive a very complimentary letter from the residents of the Purple Cliffs, the unhoused population that was out there, signed a signed memorandum saying thank you so much for allowing this camp to stay open with the limited services that we have for those folks at that site and the conditions that they have become accustomed to out there. And very appreciative of the fact that both the city and the county have agreed to allow this camp to remain open through the winter. So with that, we move on to our next item, which is 12.2. And 12.2.1 is a discussion of possible action concerning a resolution authorizing an additional appropriation to the capital improvements fund for acquisition of property for the 32nd Street Grade Separated Crossing. So with that, we can have a summary from staff, either Jose or Kathy Metz.
I will hand it over to you, Kathy.
Excellent. Jose, good choice.
So Kevin Hall and I actually worked together on this agenda documentation. And so typically does handle purchase of property for the city has done that for a number of years. And so I'm actually going to turn it over to Kevin to provide an overview. I'm happy to answer any questions of the council. And Kevin, I'll turn it over to you, please.
Thanks, Kathy. I'm gonna, we have two items on the agenda tonight related to the same issue. And the first item, as Mayor Brookie has indicated, is an appropriation of $710,000, a request to appropriate so that we have funds available to do a land acquisition at 275 East 32nd Street. As as the Agenda Doc points out, the purpose of the acquisition primarily is for the development of an underpass of 32nd Street to connect the existing sections of the Animus River Trail, both at the south of 32nd and north of 32nd Street. And as you know, north of 32nd Street, that trail has now been completed up to the Oxbow property. So it's now a much more utilized route for bicycles, pedestrians, hikers, that sort of thing. Excuse me. The I'm just gonna jump in here. So that's the purpose of the acquisition, the property. The appropriation actually needs to occur in order to execute the contract. So the city attorney asked that we do the appropriation resolution first. There's not a lot of details I need to provide here other than the request to city council is for $710,000, which would include the acquisition of the property at $700,000 and $10,000 for some of the due diligence associated with not only closing the property but doing some inspection of the property. And we will talk more about the details of the acquisition shortly with the actual contract that you have in 12.2.2. In earlier discussions, there was some comments related to the resolution that is attached to this request for an appropriation. And what I might do is allow council to ask a couple of questions regarding the resolution and see whether there's any modifications that would be necessary to meet the needs of the appropriation and council approval. So with that, maybe I'll open it up for comments.
Thank you, Kevin. Comments from council? Barbara?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Again, kudos to the staff and to to the city attorney for working on this and pulling it together. I think it's wonderful news. You know, I raised the issue of tying this specifically to a project. And I guess I want to raise part of my rationale is I I think it's a wonderful piece of property and and could be used for the parks and rec or open spaces in a in a variety of ways. My concern with putting in some tying language specific to the ART is in part is procedural. We had a CIP project approved that was a three to two vote for a certain design that was pulled back during COVID. And now we've had discussions, but we've had no, as a council, approval of any new CIP. So tying this to something specific that we haven't approved just seems not quite the best procedural way for me. So I would like to see this having it tied to, you know, it would support the goals of Parks and Rec or the open space because it will be used with the dedicated sales tax funding. I just don't think a specific clause in that second paragraph is necessary. But I would support, you know, including something that says it will, you know, be used for purposes related to open space or a parks and recreation. Thank you.
We have a response, I believe, from Kathy or some comment. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Councilor Nozworthy, Mayor Brookie. Just wanted to let the council know that this purchase is proposed to be expended out of the 2015 half-cent tax fund. We are not able to purchase open space just for open space purposes or out of that fund, out of the 2015 fund. It would have to come out of the 2005 fund. That's why we were specific on the reason for the acquisition is because it's being associated with the reason the reason for the acquisition is for the construction of the Animus River Trail. And so that is an eligible expense out of the 2015 tax. And so that's why we tied it specifically to that funding source. Had we wanted to just buy it as open space or purposes, then it would need to come out of the 2005 fund rather than the 2015.
Again, I I appreciate your response. I I just think that we're tying council's hands for a project that's not been discussed or approved through the CIP process. So, you know, I I really want to move on getting this property, but I do not think it's appropriate to tie our it to something specific that council has not approved.
Other thoughts from council? Given that, I mean, that is a little bit of a twist, certainly, that that it is tied specifically to that fund. And I I had previously thought that if it was we could not tie it that directly, but use it for for parks and recreation purposes. But given the given the nature of your statement, and I understand that 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 ballot language was very, very specific as to what those funds would be used for and that we need to tie it to this. It wouldn't preclude us from making a decision later. And maybe we need to get a legal opinion about that as to whether or not if the, for whatever reason, we this never came to a fruition or the design was determined not to be feasible or whatever outcome might be that we could dispose of or utilize in some other manner this same piece of property, which is why I'm excited about acquiring it. I think we all are.
Mayor, may I may I interject that, you know, in the previous CIP that was discussed, it was going to be paid for out of both 2005 and 2015 tax funds. So that whole project was to support the overpass and bridges. So, you know, that that Director Metz has identified the one again. I think that, you know, that that's okay. But again, I'll come back with, we can direct it back to a Parks and Rec purpose, but we have not approved a project and putting it into a resolution in advance concerns me. Thank you.
So, Councilor Nozworthy, if I could just let you know, when we were just building the trail, you know, not buying any property, it certainly could be paid from both funds when we're constructing the trail. What we're talking about here is acquisition of property. And because it's acquisition of property, that's why it's a little different. That's why we needed to be specific about the purpose of why we were buying the property for the Animus River Trail. So I just want to make sure you understood the difference.
I do accept that the 2005 funds that are used for Durango Mesa are for acquisition.
Think about that if you like. And Councilor Protem Baxter has a question.
I just want to also clarify that the 2015 sale dedicated sales tax was not intended to only be parks and rec usage. It was also intended to encompass multimodal and some other smaller usages. So saying that the 2015 tax being used, it has to be directly attached to the river trail, I'm not sure is completely accurate.
Well, I understand it's the will of the council as to whether the resolution changes. There there may be a way to make the resolution work. In speaking to, you know, the funds to acquire property for the Parks and Rec purposes consistent with the 2015 half-cent tax fund, I I think the intention is still the same, but it reads a little bit different and it it isn't so specific. And if you were to consider that alternative, you would also want to do that later in the resolution as well because of the call out that it relates to in a couple of places. And that's one alternative to consider.
And I'll chime in. I was actually, while Kevin was about to speak, I had scribbled some language about eligible purposes that are not so specific. So, yeah, I think the language he used was similar to what I had proposed. But, you know, eligible purposes under the 2015 half-cent sales tax fund. Because I think there's several places, and I printed out the resolution, that we might need to make a change to the resolution. But some language like that, I think, would work.
And maybe just to instill in our minds a little bit, if you could restate that, Kevin, or if you've got a different version, Dirk.
Ours is interchangeable.
Okay, Kevin, can you might say that again? And then we'll get comment from Melissa and and Chris as well.
Is there interest in the council modifying the resolution? If so, I can I can restate the changes. And I guess I'll reiterate what I said earlier. So.
Restate.
Okay, second, whereas the second line carries through, says capital projects fund to acquire property for the and you could strike the last cent, the last line in that whereas and replace it with for parks and rec purposes consistent with the 2015 half-cent tax fund. And you would use that same approach under Section 1?
Okay.
Well, in Section 2.
Thanks, Kevin. And that's
And in the and then the title, the title also refers to Animus River Trail project. So you would change it in the title, change it in the second whereas, change it in both Section 1 and Section 2 for the language that Kevin suggested.
Just as a comment, we do have, I don't know how we're handling public participation in this topic or if we are or not, but there is a hand raised in the audience.
This section does not have public participation. This is a administrative item.
Wanted to let the public know.
It is a, well, it should be clear it's administrative item and it's not a public hearing. So there is no public comment. The, so I would ask Councilor Bettin or Councilor Youssef if you have any thoughts regarding the change, any change in language of that nature.
I'm comfortable with the the changes suggested. If the other counselors feel more comfortable broadening the the use, I think I I'm following the reasoning of Councilor Nozworthy relative to the 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 actual design hasn't been approved. We haven't gone through that process. This is a little cart before the horse. It is just the timing of the way some of these things kind of work with the property becoming available. I think every intent is to utilize this as connectivity and and underpass that's potentially proposed. And we all understand that. But I think I think she's right that we don't necessarily know if we can proceed with that in its full completion. We may not want to tie ourselves to the very specific language. So I'm comfortable with what Kevin proposed.
Thank you, Chris. Councilor Youssef?
I just want to make sure with Ms. Metz, if these changes were to be made, that there would be no implications to a potential. I know that we have talked a lot. This is for acquisition of property, but I just wanted to make sure that no implications to the potential GOCO grant that we have on the table to I I know a lot of the discussion was around trying to maintain that grant, extending that grant so we don't lose it. Just wanted to make sure I got your feedback on that.
Yes, Councilor Youssef, we have received written verification from Great Outdoors Colorado when we submitted our last pay request. We can, the city has received 50% of the total grant award, which was $1,382,955. And so we can receive half of that amount and only half of that amount until the project is complete. And so we have received written verification from Great Outdoors Colorado that we do have another six months on to our grant award. It expired in September of 2020, and we have now until March of 2021 to come forward with a proposal of how we're going to have a grade separated crossing of 32nd Street. They are aware that we are considering the purchase of this property and are certainly supportive in the city's efforts to find the right solution that works for the community for a grade separated crossing. So GOCO is working with us, and we're pleased to report that.
Excellent. Thank you, Kathy. That's that's great news. And so with that, any further discussion? Melissa, go ahead.
Sorry, just to clarify. Thank you for clarifying that. And then I would just add that I think that, you know, we are all aware that as a community, there was significant opposition to the previous proposed design, that this provides a potential alternative for connectivity. If the most important thing here is to to acquire the property and to provide to have it be an option for a future consideration. And so if the wording can be more general, but make sure that it's tied to the right purposes for for tax reasons and to the right right funds, then for, for tax reasons and to the right, right funds, then, then, then I'm okay with that. Most important thing is that we're able to acquire this and give us options as a community to provide for the best connectivity options.
Thank you, Melissa. I would echo that for the record. And, and a lot of these things remain in the record that, that was the intended purpose of the acquisition of this property was to complete the river trail with a grade separated crossing. So with that acknowledgement, I would enter, we can create a motion, I believe, accepting of the language that was been proposed by Kevin Hall in, inserted into those two places. I don't, that's a bit of an awkward motion, but Dirk, can we accept a motion which just refers to the language that Kevin described?
Yes. Yes, you can. It's actually four places where it needs to be inserted, just to be clear. So someone, you know, for the purposes of a motion, I would say the title would be changed to strike the term, the Animus River Trail project and insert the language that Kevin proposed, I think was Park and Rec Purpose properly or consistent with 2015 sales tax fund. Likewise, that same language would be added in, in the second whereas in lieu of the last phrase that says the development of the Animus River Trail with a grade separated crossing of 32nd Street. In section one, the phrase for the 32nd Street grade separated crossing would be deleted with the addition of the language that Kevin provided. And lastly, section two, the last phrase for the 32nd Street grade separated crossing project would be deleted and the language that Kevin proposed be inserted there as well. So there's four places to do that.
Thanks for that summary. That's great. And I think if we, if someone were to entertain a motion that reflected the, the locations that Dirk has identified and the language that revisions that Kevin has identified, if anybody's brave enough to put that motion together.
I can move to accept the, the two, the two resolutions with amendments as described by Kevin and Dirk in the four locations.
Let's do them, I could suggest, let's do them one at a time. This is the resolution for the appropriation and then the other one will come up in a separate item.
So I can move for the, the resolution to approve the appropriation with the language amended as described by Kevin in the appropriate locations that the attorney, the city attorney has mentioned. Does that work, Dean?
It works. There was a, it's appropriation to the capital projects fund. I think that might be a reference.
Appropriation to the capital improvements project fund.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call, please?
Actually, there's just call for discussion first.
We had quite a bit of discussion, but we're always.
We did, but Robert's Rules of Orders call for a motion and then asking if there's any discussion before the vote.
Hearing done. I'll call for a roll call.
I think there is some discussion, is there? Did anyone, I, I'm sorry, Dean, I, I was assuming that councillor Baxter raised it because there might be some discussion that was not covered.
I'm, I'm suggesting that we need to ask for that, allow time for people to say no or yes and to have their discussion.
I think you asked for, I saw none. I asked for the roll.
Well, you didn't, you really didn't give anybody a chance, Dean. So I will have some discussion then if you're, if you're okay with that. Thank you.
Pro Tim Baxter, please have a discussion and.
I understand that this piece of property is intended in the highest interest to create a seamless connectivity and a non-grade crossing for the Animus River Trail. And I personally, for a $3.4, $4 million expense, believe that there are other projects that we need to address first, particularly in this time of declining revenues. And those include safety for the crossing of Camino. They include safety for the entirety of 32nd Street from 250 all the way to Camino Del Rio. And as I rode down the river trail today, all the way south, it reminded me again that we don't have a river trail complete to standard all the way through. The areas with the asphalt sections are, could be considered dangerous. And it is not the shining jewel in this condition that we all have said that we wanted the river trail to be and that 95% of our, approximately 95% of our respondents to our surveys say is that they use on a, on a continuous basis. So personally, I, I don't believe that the highest and best use for the taxpayer dollars is a grade separated crossing for the North Animus Trail, River Trail.
I, I would, if I may ask, so Dean, would like to just jump in and say that I have been quite vocal in not thinking that a grade separated crossing is necessary, that there are higher and better uses for the significant sum of money. I've been real concerned about Camino Del Rio crossing or other crossings. So with, recognizing that the 2015 sales tax dollars are also available for the multimodal. That said, this is a rare opportunity that hasn't come forward. And so, which is why I wanted to remove this specific because we haven't had that full discussion again under, under this new project. So I, I recognize it's a rare opportunity to purchase this property and I don't want to miss that opportunity. But I also believe that we need a proper discussion in light of competing interests of, again, what's the best use for resources? And that'll come at a budget discussion time. So I wanted to put that in there as well. And I appreciate the council being willing to, to provide a more less restrictive purpose to allow us to have that full proper discussion as a council in due time.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors? Councillor Youssef, councillor Bettin?
No, I, I don't disagree with councillor Nozworthy. The discussion will happen during the budget, just like it did last year. And, and so that's the most appropriate place to have it. But this is a time sensitive situation. So I also appreciate that councillor Nozworthy and, and councillor Baxter are, are recognized that the timing issue of this acquisition. And so I, I think that we're all kind of in agreement.
Thank you, thank you. Chris, any final thoughts or?
I'm good. Thank you. Thank you.
I just want, you know, the, the, the underpass was mentioned, it has a separate budget. The safety issue is on 32nd Street. We'll, we just heard today that we might be able to move that forward on a more advanced schedule as well. So just so the public, it's not an either or, you can't, it's just not a choice of either or on a number of these issues. It's all going to happen in time and the taxpayers have made that choice for us and, and authorized the expenditure of funds. So it's a matter of when these things happen and the timing of them, not if they happen. So just want to leave it with that and ask for a roll call, please.
Councillor Bettin?
Yes.
Councillor Nozworthy?
Yes.
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Abstain.
Mayor Brinkley?
Yes.
Let's move on to.
Can we, can, can I, did we decide in our discussions at all with abstaining votes? If, if we can talk about why we're abstaining, was there a discussion about that? Or can we, are we just going to abstain because that's our right? Just to clarify.
I think we, there was never any resolution on that, but you're sure, welcome to ask councillor Baxter her intent in abstaining.
Is it possible to ask for clarity on that?
Kim, do you have a response that you'd like to share with us?
I didn't realize Melissa was saying that to me. She just said, is it possible to ask for clarity?
I'm sorry, you were the only one who abstained. So if, if you're willing to communicate with council and, and, and the public who may be listening in on, on, on why the abstaining vote, I, if you're willing to share that, I would appreciate it.
Sure, I'd be happy to share. So if you look at the purpose of an abstention, it, one of the reasons for doing so is that you don't have enough information, that you feel that you don't have enough information to make an informed choice. And I did mention that in an email that I sent out today that I think there's some things we have not discussed about this project that we should be discussing before we make this kind of a decision. But additionally, one of the purposes of an abstention is to say that I don't want to vote no, but I'm willing to go along with the decision of the group. And really, the only time an abstention is not recommended is if you're trying to manipulate the outcome of the vote. In that case, you might as well just vote. So I'm the only abstention for one thing and I'm not intending to manipulate the outcome of the vote. I am happy to go along with council's decision. But I, I don't have enough information to make a good choice in this, in this matter, so I'm abstaining.
I absolutely appreciate the desire for more information. And if, if, if you, if it's appropriate or you could follow up by email, I think it would be good to let staff and hopefully council also know what additional information you're seeking so that we can all be privy to that. Because I would, I would venture to suggest that's probably good requested information. So I'd love to hear it too.
I actually already have done that in the last two days, so it is in your email. So that's one of the, one of the issues.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I haven't seen the emails yet. So is it possible to get clarity on that for the record?
No, I don't, I don't think this is pertinent to our discussion tonight. We've already voted, we've made a decision on this, so it's what it is. And this is, as you said, this is a long-term discussion as to where money is used in the 2015 and the 2005 and every other sales tax and fees that we have. It's a budget discussion and we'll have it again.
Okay, so I, I'm guessing then that, that more information is related to budget issues or something. But in any case, I would be interested in that at some point. I haven't seen the emails. We don't, most of our work is conducted in public sessions. So I just wanted to see if we could get some clarity. Also for staff, I'm sure they've probably seen the emails, but I just like to be transparent as possible for the.
Yeah, I understand that and I have asked for more information and until I actually get the information, there's nothing to talk about. So you, if you want to go back and look through your emails, you will see the email request that says, I don't have enough information and it explains why.
Okay.
Brings up the issue, I think we'll move on to, thank you for, for that, Kim and Melissa as well. We'll move on to 12.2.2, discussion and possible action concerning resolution authorizing the acquisition of the McCormick and Hargraves parcel and direct the city manager to execute a contract and close on the acquisition. So this is part two of our previous discussion, which lends me to wonder if a councillor abstains from a decision on one portion of this, does that preclude that person by not, by virtue of not having enough information to make a decision on this action as well? Is my, or I was going to, I mean, if you get. So.
Who knows, you might, you might give me some more information during this discussion. I have the right to vote or not vote on any vote, on any topic brought before us for a vote.
You can't have it both ways. I mean, if you're not, if you're abstaining on the acquisition of the property, how can you vote to pay for the property is my, my.
Dean, Dean, we all have the right to vote or not vote on every item brought to us for consideration.
But this one, you have enough information, we will have enough. Okay, let's just go open it up. We have a discussion and Kevin, if you could lead us through the, or perhaps Dirk on the resolution of authorization for the acquisition itself.
And will that include, as we discussed already, the, the language or will we have to go through that all again?
I think this one's a little simpler. Kevin can lead the way through it. But this was a resolution to authorize the, or to approve the purchase contract and authorize the city manager to execute it and then take all actions required to close. I would suggest if we want similar language to the resolution that was just passed earlier, that we strike, and Kevin can chime in because we haven't talked about this. We can strike the first whereas and the sixth whereas completely, because those are the two that refer to the pedestrian underpass and then change the language in what would now be the first whereas to reflect, take out the phrase in the second, second now first whereas that starts after 275 East 2nd Street, strike the as a required land acquisition necessary to construct an underpass of 32nd Street and insert the same language that we used from the previous resolution. I think that will take out references to the specific use.
Thank you, Dirk. So I'll now open it up for discussion amongst councillors.
Could I just give a shout out again to our staff, but also to the sellers and their representatives for working with us? I just want to appreciate the spirit of working together on this effort. And I think it's a, a potential win-win for everyone. So I just wanted to give that recognition to the sellers as well.
Barbara, duly, duly noted. And if there's no further discussion, we can entertain a motion and then followed by, as requested, further discussion. So I think if we can get to a motion, that would be great.
I'm happy to make a motion that we approve this resolution with the changes provided by the city attorney and described by the assistant city manager.
Thank you, councillor Nozworthy. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, councillor Bettin. It's been moved and seconded. As been requested previously, we will have additional discussion by city council. Any further comments? Seeing none, we will, may I have a roll call, please?
Councillor Bettin?
Yes.
Councillor Nozworthy?
Yes.
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
No.
Mayor Brinkley?
Awesome passes. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the last item on our agenda, which is council reports in action. Each council member is provided an opportunity to report on meetings recently attended and to discuss topics not otherwise appearing on the agenda. So we can start with Mayor Pro Tim Baxter.
Thank you, Dean. So last week, I attended the FLC Senate virtually. It was very challenging because they use Microsoft Teams and we use Zoom and Microsoft Teams works differently. So, but it was, it was an interesting session and there, there was only one person who asked questions, but they had like five questions. And it was amazing to me how engaged, I think that she was representing a lot of the other Senate representatives, engaged. She had really read our budget. She knew where the dollars were going, where the money was going, was interested in how the police were funded, what we might be doing to change the way that that's funded. All sorts of really involved, engaged topics. So that was very interesting. I really look forward to our next meeting when I understand Microsoft Teams better and, and can see the whole situation a little bit better. The other meetings that I've been attending are, the Economic Alliance has been having some strategy development sessions. So there have been two of them and both Jose and I have attended both of them as well as Alex from the planning department. And it's been very interesting there, so county representative, other board member representatives for the alliance, nine R, I'm sorry, region nine, FLC, the provost was there. So it's been very interesting to bring these different groups of people together to have a conversation about what is the strategy that the alliance wants to adopt in order to support their vision and their mission. And I think it's. And I think it's very heartening to see that, that the concerns that the city has about housing affordability, about job creation, about transportation, about, you know, where are we going? Who, who is, who are we going to be? What's our region going to look like? What's our county going to look like? What's our city going to look like? And how do those all function together? So it's been very interesting, and I look forward to the next steps that we take. And then the, the Alliance, it's in the Alliance's hands now to get the feedback from this group to do something with that and to help and to start developing their strategy. So that was very encouraging.
Great. Thanks, and thanks for being our liaison to the Senate. That's awesome. That's great, great group of people. And fortunately, we have the diversity of a higher education facility in our community, so it's awesome. Former Mayor Youssef. You're on mute. Melissa, you're on mute for a moment, wherever you are.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to be the liaison to the Community Relations Commission at the last meeting. It was really, really a, it was a very interesting meeting, and part of it was covered in the Durango Herald. They talked about reviewing the trail names first. That was the first item on their agenda. Very interesting discussion about some of the trail names and potential suggestions for changes on that. Then they moved on to, they heard from two Nine R board members, Kristen Smith and Mike Shoder from the Nine R School Board. And they were exploring opportunities to address inequities in the achievement gap and asking for recommendations from the Community Relations Commission on how they might go about addressing those inequities. And a couple of recommendations were made. One of them was to talk about the opportunity gap instead of the achievement gap, which I found very insightful, as well as they talked about the fact that representation is a big, is a big problem, that many of our students aren't getting the representation that they need, that they need. And they really recommended to the Nine R School Board that they also themselves go forward and think about hosting their own listening sessions. So it was really good discussion around that. They're having discussions at the Community Relations Commission about the PD Citizen Review Board. This was moved, though, to the next meeting, so that will be discussed at the next meeting. The next listening session, which I wanted to make sure all the counselors knew about, or all, all of us, and, and, and anybody listening, it's very important, is October fifteenth from five thirty to seven thirty. I believe this will be their third listening session. They talked about Google Translate, and they showed us how it works, and they, they switched and showed us how you can turn it on, really, any, any various language, and they talked about the fact that this is a start to this process of translating the website, but it's not completed. It's just the beginning part, part, beginning stages of getting the initial highlighted titles changed over so they could see it. And anyway, that was really all I had, but it was a very good meeting, and I look forward to continuing to participate when I'm able. It was good, good discussions.
Thank you, Melissa. Counselor Patine? You're on mute, Chris?
I'm going to pass. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, then we'll move right on to Counselor Noseworthy. Thank you.
Great. First of all, I want to give a shout out to Counselor Youssef for filling in for me. I've been away on a holiday, and so she attended the session for me. But Melissa, there wasn't a change that, there's been a postponement of that October fifteenth listening session. They're going to hold off on that. And so I just, I, I wanted to correct that. It came in as one of those emails that we're all trying to keep up with. So I, my multimodal advisory board meeting was canceled due to lack of a quorum, but I will be attending tomorrow the special multimodal advisory board meeting and also the board meeting for the Alliance. So I'll have something to report next time. And again, Melissa, thank you for filling in for me. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you so much, Counselor Noseworthy, and I'll just wrap up with, two weeks ago, I, we had two proclamations in our city council meeting, one for Constitution Week, followed by the proclamation for the International Day of Peace. So that involved the following Monday to, which was the actual International Day of Peace, to have a bell ringing in Buckley Park where I reread the proclamation, and it was a really interesting gathering of, of folks, beginning with the Native American Blessing and some sentiments by all, and then the ringing of the bell, which happened to be concurrent with the United Nations Peace Bell, which was rung at the United Nations in Washington, in New York City. So Durango got to have our little bell ringing ceremony to participate in that full Day of Peace. Secondly, I've been involved with the ski area industry Governor's Council on COVID, developing COVID policy for reopening ski areas. And so we're creating the governors, which will become the healthcare policy for, not healthcare policy, but the public health policy relative to all things related to ski area operations. That's lift lines, that's transit, that's restaurants, that's their office operation, et cetera. So that will, the governor will be issuing those, those regulations in the following week, and happy to have a couple of people in the community, myself and Brian Devine from San Juan Basin Health has been asked to be on that commission as well. Lastly, I just want to reiterate, the Greg Phillips spoke earlier in public comment about the League of Women Voters scheduled discussions, and I will be announcing those on the Council Connect, which will be recorded tomorrow, and will reiterate the times for those listening in for all of those League of Women Voter discussions that'll be held over the next few weeks. So with that, any further discussions for the good of council? Jose, this is, you made it for your first week. We're really happy to have you here. I just want to say thanks for Jose. He's, we're trying not to get him trial by fire. He had his first SWAT team experience today in, in our city. So he had the full spectrum of services that the city of Durango participates in, that not being one of our most exemplary, but it had a great outcome, and thank you for, for your guidance on that front as well. And Chief Bramer is listening in as well. Thanks for a job well done. This afternoon, we had a situation in our community that could have ended a lot worse than it did. So thank you for that. And with that, we'll end this meeting and adjourn this, this city council. Thank you so much.